Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the City of Alpharetta's May 5, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. At this time, it is now 6:30 PM, and I call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Please note that all members except Vice Chair Brady are present for tonight's meeting. And at this time, we will now have a re-swearing in for our chairman, and I'll come down there now to meet you. I state your name.
Francis Kugel.
Hereby accept the honor.
Hereby accept the honor.
Of serving as a member.
Of serving as a member.
Of the Planning Commission.
Of the Planning Commission.
Of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia.
Of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia.
And in doing so.
In doing so.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I shall faithfully perform.
That I shall faithfully perform.
The duties of Commissioner.
The duty of Commissioner.
That I will regularly attend meetings.
That I will regularly attend meetings.
And uphold the ideals.
And uphold the ideals.
Of community and service.
Of community and service.
That I will act and conduct business.
That I will act and conduct business.
In accordance with.
In accordance with.
The city's Code of Ethics and Conduct.
The city's Code of Ethics and Conduct.
And that I shall support.
And that I will support.
And the Charter and Laws.
And the Charter and the Laws.
Of the City of Alpharetta.
Of the City of Alpharetta.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the State of Georgia.
And laws of the State of Georgia.
And the Constitution and Laws.
And the Constitution and Law.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
So sworn.
So sworn.
This 5th day of May.
This 5th day of May.
2022.
2022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can resume your chair now. And then Commissioner Davis, if you'll join me down here. Okay, now, as you all know, tonight is Ms. Davis's last night with us. She's been here a little over a year, and we wanted to send her off on a great note. So Councilman Binder wrote a letter for you, and I'll read that out loud. It says, "Dear Mrs. Davis, the health of a community, its heartbeating success, can be measured by the willingness of her citizens to dedicate their time and energies to the betterment of their fellow citizens. More often than not, their names are unknown and efforts overlooked by the masses, but their marks can be found on every street, in the faces of happy neighbors, and in a future that always seems bright. As your service on the Alpharetta Planning Commission closes, I want to pause for a moment to thank you for being such a person. I and everyone at the City of Alpharetta appreciate your time and effort spent serving our community by spending numerous hours at Recreation Commission and Planning Commission meetings, and by volunteering to be a member of our 2021 Parks Bond Committee. Alpharetta is better for your efforts. Please know that you are an important member of our city, and we are grateful that you will continue to serve on the city's Board of Ethics. Sincerely, Jason Binder." Thank you for your service. Of course. Right, Mr. Chairman.
This meeting is already in order, so I'm not going to call it to order. We have two items to consider tonight. One is new, the second is old, and the items forwarded to the council will be considered on May the 23rd of 2022. So come back and express your views to City Council. They make the final decision. We are a recommending body. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes from the April 14 meeting. I was not in that meeting, so I cannot vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 14, 2022.
I'll second.
Motion has been made. If properly secured or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. First item on the agenda is MP-22-02 slash CU-22-01, Bright Path Academy of Georgia. As you, Michael, you're presenting, since Kathy is not here.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The first item before you this evening is Bright Path Academy of Georgia. They're requesting a master plan amendment and conditional use to allow a school academic use for Bright Path Academy in a 11,150 square foot existing office building on 1.4 acres. An amendment to the Professional Turf Supply Master Plan is requested to add the proposed use. Subject property, and I have the location map on the overhead, subject property is located at 12395 Morris Road. Property is ZONE CUP, Community Unit Plan, subject to the Professional Turf Supply Master Plan. Property was developed in 2006 with a one-story, 11,150 square foot office building. This is the existing site layout, so this is the office building. The road is here, parking in the office building. One of the conditions in the master plan approval, Condition 5, limited the property's usage to office and other permitted uses within the OP Office Professional Zoning District. The school academic use is permitted as a conditional use in the CUP zoning district, as well as the Office Professional Zoning District. Bright Path Academy of Georgia is a not-for-profit school for children with special needs. Educational services are for students in grades 6 through 12. Students will comprise mostly of nonverbal children with an autism diagnosis and sensory processing disorders. Initially, enrollment is expected to start out at about 10 students, beginning in about August 2022, with an eventual student population of approximately 30 children. Hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. This is a, we did review the existing site with the office building, believe that the site is appropriate for conversion to a school use. This is the applicant's proposed floor layout. They're recreation, so they're not proposing any exterior playgrounds or anything at this time. Recreation is in a large space here with some small classrooms surrounding and offices concentrated on the other side of the building. Of course, we reviewed the requests against the review criteria for a master plan amendment and conditional use. We believe the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding uses and other locations for this type of business, which are situated in commercial and office environments. This was shown to the public at the April 3 Community Zoning Information Meeting, and there were no public comments. With that, staff is recommending approval to the applicant's request, subject to five conditions, and I'll go through those. Condition 1, add school academic to the Professional Turf Supply Master Plan as a conditional use. 2, school academic use shall be added as a conditional use at 12395 Morris Road and limited to no more than 11,150 square feet. 3, conditional use approval shall be limited to Bright Path Academy of Georgia. No additional school academic businesses or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. 4, in the future, if an outdoor recreational area is contemplated, it shall be limited to the north side of the building, and the 50-foot buffer adjacent to the residential property shall be maintained. And then Condition 5, prior conditions of approval related to the Professional Turf Supply Master Plan shall remain in effect. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. How long has Bright Path been in existence?
I'm not sure exactly, but the applicant is here this evening and could answer that question for you.
That's all. Have any further questions for Michael?
I have a quick question on the, in the future, about the outdoor recreational area. Can you show me on that, on the site plan, where the north?
Sure. So this would be on this side of the building here, and I'll go back to the site plan, too. So it would be in this area. So the reason for that, and go back to the location map, there is a residential development at Windward Park, townhomes that have been developed to the east of the property. There's an existing 50-foot under-stirred buffer at the rear of this property. That's why that condition refers to maintaining that 50-foot buffer. The idea is that if there is any outdoor recreation, you would want to try to keep it further away from the residential, if possible, so on the north side of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, I just have one other question, and Eric, maybe this is for you, but I can't remember which road, and I tried to find it and I couldn't, is going to be the new connection to that express lane. Is it the Trade Winds, or is it this road that this facility is going to be on?
It's Trade Winds Park.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we're going to ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thane Brooks, 10295 Worthington Manor, in Swanee.
Thank you. You can make a presentation if you wish, or you can take questions from the board if you have no presentation. I need you to lean over. It will pick you up standing. The microphone will pick you up.
Perfect. Okay. So you had a question earlier in regards to how long Bright Path has been in existence? It's brand-new. This is a startup. I own a special needs therapy clinic in Alpharetta already, and I wanted to do something for the community in regards to this being a nonprofit school, and I wanted to stay in Alpharetta for it. So I found this building, been looking around for a long time, and this was perfect.
Have you done this before with, you know, special needs? This is the first time?
For me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, definitely new for me. I'm a dad. I own a company, Therapy Land, because I have a daughter with autism, and I felt that this was great. And I've realized over the last 70 years, for owning Therapy Land, that this need wasn't being met. A lot of the schools that are out there right now are more for ADHD, high-functioning autism, and in a school system, unfortunately, they don't have that type of a setting to help children be able to cope in the environment that they're in, so this will allow them to do that. Going outside is not so much an issue in regards to like a playground. I think a lot of you are concerned potentially of that. That's not ever going to be the situation. If they go outside, they're going to be looking in the park, one-on-one with a teacher or an assistant, help them cope with the environment, to learn in that environment as well.
So you have instructors, teachers, and they go through a school year curriculum?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So I hired a head of school already, and we're working on the, on the school calendar right now, and then we're going to be hiring teachers and advertising and bringing in kids, and that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think it's a wonderful thing you're, you know, you're trying to do for the community, and the question I had was like on the, in the cafeteria, are you going to have like a cafeteria, or is it?
No, not right now. At this point, our goal is to get in there and, you know, build it. I've got a design that I'll be working with, with an architect that's very familiar with this space and this environment, deals with other special needs schools. And because it's an existing building, we can utilize the space as we grow, but I'm going to work out an actual architectural plan. We'll come back to the city at that particular point in time when we present it, how it's going to be laid out. But for right now, that's not necessary. We're going to be using, they're going to be bringing their own food, and they'll be sitting with the, with the teacher or assistant and eating the food at the time.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to open the meeting for public comment. Anyone in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anyone in opposition? None in favor, none in opposition. Well, thank you for joining us, y'all. We are glad you're here to spend this time with us. Do you have anything else you'd like to add? Usually I'll call for a rebuttal, but there was no comment, so thank you for your presentation. I'm going to turn this over to the board for discussion and a motion.
I just want to say I have a kid with special needs, and I understand the importance of a good middle school and high school, because it's so important, that transition time. So I really commend you on doing this. I think there's a gap of kids that get left out, but I also think that Alpharetta is thought of highly from a school standpoint for standard curriculum kids, as well as special needs, so I appreciate you taking that as a stand. With that, I'm going to make a motion if I can. I'm going to make a motion to approve MP-22-02 slash CU-22-01 slash Bright Path Academy of Georgia.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and properly secured, and I will echo what you just said regarding what you're putting into this. When I read this application, I said, "What a beautiful thing to do. It's so much needed in our community and several other communities in our country," and we really applaud you for, for this. And when I was asking you about whether you've done this before, and you said, "No," that's a, that's a good leap of faith, and we are really excited that you're doing this. So with no further comments, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. You know, it must lay. It goes before council on May the 23rd. Our recommendation is City Council approve this. Thank you so much. The next item is odd business, and I'll ask for the desire of the board, is there a motion to take this off the table?
Yes, Councilman, or Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table MP dash, oh, excuse me. Z-22-02 slash V-22-08 slash 116 plus 126 North Main Street.
Second.
All right. And do we have a presentation, Michael? Just refresh the board's memory what this was all about, and then we'll take it from
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Again, this item was presented at the April 14 Planning Commission. The item was tabled. The Planning Commission at the time asked the applicant to look back at a couple of particular issues and work with staff on those. They were specific to a stream determination on the property, as well as a condition related to tree saves. And just to refresh you on the applicant's request, it's a request to rezone the property. Property is 1.43 acres, rezoning to downtown mixed-use to allow for two mixed-use buildings. At the time, this was before you. Last month, it was two four-story buildings. The applicant has brought the buildings down to three stories. The buildings consist of a mix of office, retail, restaurant, and four for-sale condominium units. The, since this was last considered, the applicant has made changes to the site plan. First of all, the location map is on the overhead here. This location is right across from the intersection at Coming Street and North Main Street. This is the site plan that was under consideration last month. Main Street, Coming Street, Violet Garden Walk. There are two buildings here. Access to the upper parking and lower parking are from the driveway on, off of North Main Street. The applicant amended this application. This, this application was showing two four-story buildings. I'll put these kind of side by side, or, so the bottom is the April plan, and this is the plan before you this evening, so you can see one of the buildings moved a little further to the north. The buildings were brought down to three stories each. And the two key items that were, there was some disagreement on last month was a request for variance to pipe a stream on the property. The applicant provided a stream determination, and then the city's stormwater engineer went out to confirm that stream determination. While our stormwater engineer was not fully in agreement with everything within that stream determination, she did determine that the stream was no longer a buffered stream, so there was no need for the variance, no longer a need for the variance for the stream buffer. So that completely goes away, and that was a pretty significant impact to the site. Before I show you these eleva, or these renderings, let me just take you back to what that looked like. So previously, this had been determined to be a buffered stream, intermittent stream, and what you see here is the blue line being the stream, the 25-foot state setback on, in the white, on either side of the blue line, the city's 50-foot buffer in pink, and then the outer orange area is the city's 75-foot impervious setback. That has been determined to no longer be, the buffers are no longer required. The other issue that we discussed last month, and we're not in agreement with the applicant war, was a condition requiring two tree saves. So the application was submitted to the city without, the site plan did not show any tree saves, and so the city arborist recommended saving these two trees. And you can kind of see the circles around two trees along this northern property line The applicant, the condition stated that the applicant would get a resistograph assessment of those trees, and if they were determined to be in good condition based on that resistograph, which determines if there's, if there's hollow cavities within those trees or decay within the trees. So if those were determined to be in good condition, then they would need to be saved. Staff went out to the site and looked at the trees, did feel that just based on a visual look of the trees, we concurred with the arborist's assessment that, that the resistograph assessment should be conducted to determine the health of the trees. So we are still recommending that condition. However, the applicant has provided an alternative. So the applicant, instead of saving those two trees, which the city arborist estimates that they're about 75-years-old piece, the applicant is proposing 21-over-story trees planted throughout the site, and this is their site plan with a planting plan. These larger circles are going to be the over-story trees along North Main Street, along their drive off of North Main Street, and along Violet Garden Walk. Those 21-over-story trees would be planted at 6-inch caliper. So the city's code requires recompense trees, so trees to remove, trees required to recompense trees that are removed on the site are planted at 4-inch caliper, and the applicant is offering as, instead of saving those two trees, to plant 21 trees at 6-inch caliper, so those would be much larger trees. Do think that that's a reasonable request, however, based on the code that is before us, that, that asks sites to save trees, we, our recommendation remains the same, the same on that condition, however, we do think that the applicant is making a reasonable request here. So those were the two primary issues that we dealt with. Of course, there were two conditions related to the stream buffer variance. Those two conditions no longer would be, would, no longer would apply, so those have been removed from the conditions. And so the applicant has proposed some markups to the conditions. Our, the staff report that has been updated in your, in your packet is the staff recommended conditions. The applicant is recommending some changes, and I'm just going to go ahead and just let you know where staff stands on some of those. So we're in agreement with the change to Condition 1. Since they have upgraded or updated the site plan, we do need to update the date referenced in Condition 1, and we're fine with the additional language here that says, "Or site modifications due to the future extension of Coming Street." Condition 11 also referenced the date on the site plan, so that should be updated as Condition 16 is the condition that required that trees number 787 and 788 be saved if they are determined to be in good condition with that resistograph assessment. As I mentioned before, the applicant is offering as a, in order to remove those trees due to the impact to their development from those trees, they're, they're proposing to plant those 21 trees at 6-inch caliper. And then the applicant is also requesting that Condition number 22 be stricken or removed. And so Condition number 22, the reason that would need to be stricken, because that condition conflicts with the current site plan that is before you this evening, the site plan with that date of April 28, 2022. So I'm just going to go back to that site plan so I can explain. So Condition 22 states, "Site improvement shall not preclude a possible future vehicular connection between Violet Garden Walk and North Main Street." So as we discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting, this is a connection that is shown in the downtown master plan. The reason why 22 would need to be stricken based on this site plan is that access to the lower portion of the applicant's parking deck, so this is access to the top portion of the parking deck through this driveway, and then the applicant was able to move the access to the lower portion of their parking deck from off of Violet Garden Walk, which was in response to residents of the West of Maine Town Home Development, requested that that would be removed off of Violet Garden Walk. And so they were able to remove it from there and, and place it within the potential future right-of-way of, of Coming Street, so access would be off of North Point, I'm sorry, North Main Street. But what the applicant has told us is that if this extension were to occur, that they would have to move that access back to Violet Garden Walk. So in order to be consistent with this site plan that they are showing you this evening, which is conditioned in Condition 1, the applicant needs Condition 22 to be stricken. And so that is the update that I'll provide on that. If you have any particular questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I have a question on the stream determination. What was it determined before? And you said, who went back to, to come up with a new determination?
Sure. So it was previously determined that the stream on the property was an intermittent stream with 75-foot buffers.
And who did that?
So that was our stormwater engineer, Jill Bazinet. She was here at the last meeting and discussed her previous determination on that. We've had two other stormwater engineers within our community development department make the same determination on that stream in the past. So her determination, her previous determination was consistent with others. So she actually went out to this property, and she actually went out to the property with our former stormwater engineer that works for a private consultant currently, and they relooked at the stream. And what she, what she determined was that she believes that due to some construction activity that has occurred on the property to the south, where this, where that stream is piped, that there's been some activity there that has now taken away the base flow from that stream, and so that it, it no longer requires, it's no longer a required buffered stream. So she is confident that, that it meets the standard and it does not require buffers.
No buffer?
No buffers. So therefore, no need for a variance.
So it's not a stream?
So it's basically, it's ephemeral. Yeah.
All right. With respect to the two other conditions, number 16, I believe I heard you mention that. you mention that you believe it's reasonable. What the applicant is proposing is reasonable.
Sure. Yeah. So the, the planting plan and the request for that change, while the, the city arborist still feels that the applicant should conduct the resistograph on the existing trees to determine their health, to see if they could be saved. He did review the applicant's planting plan and the offer to plant the larger size six-inch caliper trees. And we do believe that it is a good, it's a reasonable request to off-site removal of, of those two existing trees. I believe, you know, we did have public comment at the last planning commission meeting. The adjacent property is a dentist, that dentist stated during public comment that a tree had actually fallen on his office. I believe we've had some planning commission members that have gone out to the site as well and heard from someone living in 126 North Main Street, as well as from that dentist, that large tree branches have fallen there. The city arborist has acknowledged that those trees are upwards of 75-plus years or, or older. So we do think that the, the offer for the six-inch caliper trees is reasonable, but the code that's before us really asks for tree saves, trees to be saved on the site. So I'm not going to push back against that condition. I just, I would say that, that the applicant is making a reasonable offer with the 21.
And which is there is no need for the resistograph to be done if they're going to be removed?
Well, you know, I think the applicant has, has stated to me in a call recently that they had planned to try to get a resistograph assessment done on the trees prior to city council. Engineers, planners, arborists, they're all in high demand right now with all the development that is occurring. So it is, is reasonable to think that it's pretty difficult to get someone out there fairly quickly. But it is, it, based on what was told to me by the applicant, it was their intent to try to get someone out there to still look at the, try to assess the trees, their, their conditions prior to city council. I don't think that it would be a bad thing for the applicant to continue through with that if, if they can get that done before city council.
Okay. And the last condition 22.
I'd also add that the resistograph will tell us if it's a li- if it's a live, healthy tree, that those trees would be specimen trees, which have a certain amount of recompense requirements based on our code, you know, versus, you know, them being unhealthy, there would be, there would, there would not be any recompense requirements. So that's, that's the reason why the arborist is requesting that we get this done. So we can determine how they fit within our code and how much replanting is required or, or tree bank contributions are required based on removal of those trees.
Understood. The, the last quotation has been removed. So any other questions for Michael at least?
Quick question, Michael. So let's go back to number 22. And I know 22, it's a rather innocent-looking sentence, but it's a very complex sentence that has a lot of potential implications. And I want to try to net it out. And can we, can we also have the site diagram on there showing, I don't know if we can have that at the same time, but that'd be helpful. So I want to be clear that if we remove 22, just tell me if the sentence is true. If we remove 22, and if the city council decides to approve what's in the master plan, which is extending Coming Street to Lily Garden Place, if those two things happen, then this developer can move their entrance to the building along, I always forget the name of these streets, Lily Garden Way.
Violet Garden.
Violet Garden Walk. Is, did I say that correctly?
So, yeah. So if this, if council pursues the extension of Coming Street here, the applicant has stated that this access would have to move to Violet Garden Walk. Okay? Condition one ties it to this site plan that shows access at this location. So if this condition, 22, is left in, the applicant would then, at the time that council extended Coming Street, would have to come back to council to get condition number one that ties it to the site plan changed.
Okay.
So that's why they are asking to delete condition number 22 now.
So number one still holds them to this site plan with access to the building from the south side?
Yes.
And if something changes with Coming Street, the developer just has to figure that out?
Correct.
For lack of a better word. Okay. They can't just automatically shift the entrance to their building to?
If they are tied to the site plan, they have to, they cannot shift this access to Violet Garden Walk.
Even if 22 is removed?
Correct.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No further questions at this time. Michael, we're going to ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation.
My name's Brent Beecham, and I live at 1104 Breckenridge Lane in Alpharetta. Technology. There we go. Then go to the next slide. Okay, this is the, the location of the property. You've seen that previously. This is the current property. It's three different parcels, and we're combining the three into one. Next slide, please. So the previous development, go to the next slide, was like this. It was the, the offset between the two. We did that because we had anticipated that the street, eventually the city would force us to build that street, and we wanted to push the building closer to the new street. Some of the comments we heard from, from the previous meeting was that the height that it was imposing on the, the townhouses next to us. So we pushed the building back. Go to the next slide, please. And we pushed the building back. So now, really, the back of our building faces, there's a detention pond over there, not the best view for our tenants, but it gets out of the, the middle of the buildings that are adjacent to us or behind us. The street, we had originally had a roundabout, and instead of doing that with a roundabout, we basically use that for tree, to plant more trees. We have the entrance that goes in below and, and the entrance that comes in on the top. And you've seen that. Next slide, please. This is a little bit closer. The, we're maintaining the original building that's there on 116. We'll restore it per the conditions. That'll probably be a restaurant. We anticipate on the first floor of the building closest to Main Street would have one, possibly two, either restaurant or retail. And like we said, there'd be offices above that. The back property, the back building would be office only on the main floor and second floor, and then residential on the top floor. Next slide, please. I think there's some confusion at the last meeting. One was about the fourth story and things like that. We do have some, some structures on top of the building. The building, though, will be 46 feet per code, three stories and 46 feet. And just like on 1, 100 North Main, there'd be some structures up there. They won't be enclosed necessarily. They'll be just for the people who operate in that building. They'll only be for, you know, outdoor use or something. We may do a green roof or something like that. We're just, we're looking in to see what we can do. But that's, that's kind of later. We're just trying to do block diagrams so you understand what the building mass will look like. And next slide. This is from kind of the north, north corner. You can still see the relationship to the size of, of 100 North Main. The roughly, 100 North Main is actually a bigger building per building, but we have two buildings. And then, again, the drive, this is where the driveway goes under. You can see that if you were to push that road through the extension, that we would have to, we, we would have to do something other than, because we, we can't just turn in that tight into that building. In fact,
We're four stories. We're down to three. So, you know, for me, there was a lot of nice things that were incorporated here. And I actually really appreciate the incoming, I don't know, parking lots where they're located now. I think they make a lot more sense than, I couldn't figure out how to drive in with a roundabout. I was confused. So there's a lot of wins, I think, for the community behind, as well as the city, from all aspects. So thank you for working hard and getting that incorporated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not at this time. I'm going to open this for public comment, and we'll ask you to come back for rebuttal after the public comments. Anyone like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
First up is Larry Bracken, 208 Violet Garden Walk.
I'm Larry Bracken. I live at 208 Violet Garden Walk in Alpharetta, which is part of the West Maine community. I feel like my second job is here because I talk to planning commission, city, city councils.
Welcome to.
But I enjoy it, and, and I'm glad to be here. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of West Maine and our homeowner association, but I want to make it clear that the views I'm expressing are shared by many residents of Park 14, which is the other community being built on the other side of Lily Garden. We've been in touch with the HOA and the residents of Canton Commons, which is down the street from us and Canton Street, as well as several other residential communities along Canton Street. So when I'm speaking tonight, I'm not authorized to speak for those communities, but I want to make it clear that we have had a lot of conversations with those folks, and they share some of the views I'm going to express tonight. I really want to commend this developer. They have gone way above and beyond to spend time with our community and with our HOA to try to work through some of the questions that we had, to explain what was going on, and to get our views on, on various things. And it's, it's really important, I think, that since we're all going to be in the same community, that, you know, we're doing that. In general, our, our community is very much in favor of this project. We think it's a terrific project. We think it's in keeping with the downtown plan. We think it's in keeping with our immediate neighborhood. Our community consists of people who have lived in other parts of the Alpharetta, Johns Creek, Milton area for years. My wife and I have lived in the area for 30 years. We all moved downtown knowing we were moving to a city environment, but we wanted it to be a nice city environment. And we think that the projects that this commission and the city council have been approving are appropriate, and we think that this falls in line with that. The principal concern that we have expressed, and which I think the developer has addressed in the current plan, is the traffic on Lily Garden and on Violet Garden. I know that city council member Dorito has been over there, and I think at least one or two of the other city council members have been there at our invitation. And they have expressed to us, they did not realize how narrow those streets are. They are very narrow residential streets. And the plan, as it originally was conceived for this building, would have put 1,600 vehicles a day coming into that building, majority of which coming down Lily Garden. And so our view is whatever this commission decides to do, please keep the traffic off of Lily Garden and Violet Garden. You know, we're not unreasonable about people who live there. If they live there, if they're residents in the community with us, of course, if there's access for those folks from Lily Garden or from Violet Garden, if they're going to park in the public areas as we do with our overflow cars, great. But we just don't want the commercial traffic, and particularly the late night and weekend restaurant traffic coming in off of Lily Garden. So that, that's a big concern for us. And I'll talk in a minute about, about the extension, because I know that's sort of the big elephant in, in the room that we all have to talk about. As far as the, the trees are concerned, this is, you know, it's been a moving target for us. I, I feel like every time I go onto the, the website and, or talk to Mr. Woodman, there's another piece of information, which is good. It means that everybody's talking to one another. This is the first I had heard about the tree plan. I think it's a great plan. And I think our community will think it's a great plan. You know, we don't want to lose two old trees, but if they're going to replace it with that many six-inch caliber trees in the medium to long term, that's a, I think that's a win-win for everybody. So we're very much in favor of the, of the tree plan. You know, as, as far as the, the extension is concerned, you know, from our perspective, we just don't want traffic on the street. However we get there, or however the commission decides to get, get there, I think we can work with it, we can live with it, but we just can't have 1,600 cars a day on top of the 300 cars a day that are anticipated for 100 North Main Street, which is painfully slowly being built behind my townhome. Because now we're, now we're talking about 2,000 cars a day coming through that area. And so, you know, our community, this is the number one topic in our, in our community, not just West Maine, but, you know, 14, you know, Park 14, I talked to, my sister lives across the, the street in some townhomes and, and a townhome on Canton Street. Everybody's talking about it because we do have the cut through at Church Street. Nobody wants that cut through coming down Lily Garden. And it's, it's already a problem with the construction traffic, just trying to get in and out. We can't even imagine what it would be like. And, you know, our, our view, we do understand there's a downtown plan. We know it was thought through very carefully in 2015. It was at a time when there was no 100 North Main Street. This property had, this new property had not been developed. West Maine wasn't there. Park 14 wasn't there. The high school wasn't there. Canton Commons wasn't there. So, you know, we think there needs to be a complete revisit of that entire issue. And so from our perspective, removing condition 22 makes sense, because the alternative that we're hearing from the developer is, is to allow traffic to come in on Lily Garden, on Violet Garden, to come in the back way. And now we're right back at a high, high volume of traffic. Now, there'll be an entrance from the top, but the majority of the parking spaces are in the lower deck. So, okay, maybe it's not 1,600. Maybe it's 1,000. I don't know what the, the number would be. And the, the traffic plan wasn't very clear on that. But it's still way more than our street can handle, and it's going to make our community essentially unlivable if we have that kind of traffic coming in. The last issue I'll just address, it's, it's, hasn't been addressed tonight, but I know it's been discussed with the developer, is the location of the dumpster. I, I'd like to hear from Mr. Beecham just about what the current plan is on that, because right now, it's supposed to be right on Violet Garden Walk, across the street from my good friends, Holmes and Tracy Hawkins. And I know they'd rather not have the odor from restaurant, a restaurant dumpster and, you know, the, the dumpster trucks coming in several times a week if, if you're going to have restaurants there. So if there's a way to deal with that, we, we'd like to talk about it, because I know that's a, a real concern for a number, a number of our neighbors. And it is for me. I mean, I, I live on the, across the corner from Holmes and Tracy. So it's something we'd like to, I think, it, it could be explored a little bit further. I don't know if it has to be presented to the commissioner or the city council. But the current plan still shows it on Violet Garden Walk. So that's our main issue. And again, thanks again to the staff and, and to all of you. They all spend a lot of time, and we're, we're really impressed with the staff. We've had a lot of interaction with them. They're all really smart and very responsive to all of us, probably more so than they should be, but.
We agree with that, and we appreciate it. Thank you for representing your neighborhood well.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Please come forward.
Next up, Brian Ritchie, 204 Violet Garden Walk.
So Brian Ritchie, 204 Violet Garden Walk, as stated. A lot was said by Larry, and there might be a few moments of redundancy, but it's just a big issue to us. And we're tired of sending emails, and you're tired of getting them. And we just hope tonight we can come through and approve this plan and kind of move on and, and support these developers in their work. The first thing I always like to state when I talk to your staff is we're not against growth. You know, we, we actually, this is a great plan. We told the developers, man, do this plan, and we'll be your customers at the restaurant. We'll, we'll support the businesses. We'd be very happy to. So we never want to come in here with the impression that, man, any growth we're against. We understand, we bought in Alpharetta. We bought downtown. We did not buy in a farm. We, we know where we are, and we accept that. With that said, I, I think, as Larry mentioned, our hope was that growth would be reasonable, and growth would anticipate, not just like right now, would anticipate not just like right now, but what the impact might be in five years, 10 years. And admittedly, when we heard the first, I think it was a zoning meeting, we got the traffic plan and said, the first model would have 1,600 unique car visits from Canton to Lily to Violet. We were like, that did not feel reasonable. It just as citizens of Alpharetta, we thought, we're all for growth, but it did not feel reasonable. So, that's really what brings us here, is, like Larry said, traffic and some other issues. And we accept, again, 100 North Main is going to bring, and these 1,600, some people might say, where'd you come up with it? These were numbers given to us, so we're not making them up, all right? The other number to consider was that we did accept that 100 North Main was going to bring 350 unique trips every day onto, using Canton, down Lily, right on Violet, into their building. In fact, their garage entries, right, like, when I back up in the morning, I'm going to have to do a little left to make sure I don't go into their garage. It's that close. But we accept it. It's part of living downtown. And to their credit, 100 North Main has some beautiful landscaping coming in. We know the construction people. We try to be very friendly. But we're still thinking like, wow, this is 350 unique car trips on, from Canton to Lily to Violet, and at the end of the day, Violet to Lily to Canton. So, we just are in a position of sometimes, and it's just disbelief, like, how can we be debating with our city that 1,600 unique car visits a day are close to 12,000 per week is good for our neighborhood? It's just hard to fathom. And I know reasonable people can disagree on issues. The other thing I just want to state up front, and then I'll just go through a couple of things and wrap, is we appreciate and believe in these developers. They came in with initial plan. We met, and they came back with another plan. We met at one of their sites. We have met at least four or five times. And when I look at this plan, I just thank these guys, because they respect our neighborhood. They've been in the neighborhood, and they know the impact of almost 2,000 unique car visits every day from Canton to Lily to Violet. And so, we support this plan, and we just, we really appreciate these guys. We can't, we hope it goes through as it is, and we can move on to just being neighbors. Just to give you a quick snapshot, because I know you have a lot of things to consider as you vote, our current situation, I just want to talk about, just because it will help explain our neighborhood's position, 14 Park Place, and I think it will also just help reinforce my ask of you tonight. So, the current situation is our neighborhood is like a war zone, and that's okay. We accept that construction has to happen for 14 Park to finish and 100 North Main to finish. But I think part of the reason that it's a war zone, and we've had people come, and those that have come visit, we appreciate that, because it's a hard neighborhood to understand unless you just see it in person. So, it's, we think part of the reason it's like, it feels this way is because Lily Garden is so small. Violet Garden is so small. And that's construction people having to deal with it. My property was damaged by a construction truck, and we've worked through it. City's been great. We've worked through it. But the moment that truck showed up on Violet Garden, I said, there's, my wife said, take a picture. There's going to be a challenge today. Because that road is so small, and a construction truck that was coming in to do some heavy work, it overwhelmed the road. So, it's hard for us, again, to imagine 2,000 unique car trips per day, or up close to 14,000 new ones per week, when it can hardly handle what it's going through today. Ms. Reynolds, at the last meeting, you said something about Violet Garden, and it made us, we're all sitting, it made us feel good, because it made us feel like you knew our neighborhood. And there were some other comments made, not intentionally or with any bad feelings. We were like, oh dang, they're going to be voting on our neighborhood, and they don't understand it. Like, it is a small bunch of roads here, and this is a big vote for our neighborhood. So, we appreciated your comments and your knowledge of Violet Garden specifically. But it made us nervous that others didn't quite understand the width of Violet Garden, and that it's not a big road. It's single-lane, maybe one other half. And I know some people can disagree, and say, no, that's a two-lane road. I use it every day. And when I have to back out of my garage right now, and there's cars behind for construction, we can't get out. So, it is not as easy as saying that's a two-lane road. I use it every day. Trust me. Go with the user. But Violet Garden, for those who have not been there, is a small, we call it an alleyway, because it's similar size to the actual alleyway in West Main. And, you know, Violet Garden, 100 North Main is done, will be taking on 350 new car trips every day. Canton to Lily to Violet to 100 North Main. So, it is going to go through tremendous change. With 100 North Main alone, you know, forget the new project. So, it's, I'm just asking you to take my word that Violet Garden is not prepared for 2,000 unique car trips or 14,000 per week. Lily Garden is, it's 30 feet wide, and we understand most roads are 50, but it's 30. It will be taking on the 350 uniques from 100 North Main as well upon completion. Lily Garden will also be adding the new residents of 14 Park Place, who are not even there yet. So, just trying to give you a mosaic of what it looks like, what's going on over there. Lily Garden is currently, it struggles to accommodate construction. It also struggles to get onto Canton. So, like, when our residents are leaving Lily and getting on Canton in the morning, I tell my wife, do not go left. Just don't. Because it's, there's some side issues. Cars are going fast. And those from our neighborhood that are trying to get onto Canton each morning, they're going to have 350 coming in every morning into North Main. So, we're going to deal with that. So, you can start to imagine the traffic picture on Lily Garden, but to think it could accommodate those 2,000 unique car trips per day, it's just hard for us to imagine, in 14 Park Place. So, trust us. We use it every day. We're on there every day, and we're not against growth. These are just facts of being on that road every day. Don't look past the Canton impact. As Larry mentioned, we've talked to Canton Commons. We've talked to the Georgian. And when we say, hey, the city is considering putting 2,000 unique car trips onto Canton, because it's not as simple as saying this only affects Lily and Violet. To get to Lily and Violet, you've got to go through Canton. So, to not accept this plan would be saying, we believe that 2,000 unique car trips per day will be helpful to Canton. We think 2,000 unique trips on Lily Garden per day would be helpful to Lily and the neighborhood, and 2,000 on Violet Garden as well. But Canton Commons and Georgian are like, they can't believe it when we tell them. They're like, that's hard to imagine. And I said, it really is, but it is up for consideration. I'll wrap here. So, I would just, again, make sure as you consider, just not, when we say Violet and Lily, there is a definite impact on Canton, for sure. In closing, you know, I've heard, no bad intentions, just conversation. I've heard some council members say, not necessarily, well, there was one planning person actually brought it up at the last meeting, again, without bad intentions, that says, you know, ideally, we should have built the streets first and the neighborhood second, because then we wouldn't have to have this conversation. But the problem is, the neighborhoods were built first, and we're there. And we're trusting you to do what's right, even if it means an adjustment, as Larry said. Because if the goal was to build the streets first, residents second, it may not have been you, but somewhere along the line, someone approved West Main going in. Someone approved 14 Park Place going in. I think, I've heard Margine is disappointed in a possible cut-through over there. But someone approved those residents going in first. So, when I hear that, my first thought is, but that's, we didn't do that. That's not our fault. And we are residents there. And so, I understand there's a plan from 2015, but somewhere along the way, you all said residents first, streets second. So, anyway, and in fairness, it wasn't, probably wasn't you, or this was apparently a long time ago. So, we're asking that you approve this plan. That's, at the end of all this, I'm saying, I'm trying to support, my ask as a resident of West Main is that you approve this plan. We support this plan. We cannot imagine 2,000 unique car visits, Canton to Lily to Violet every day, Violet to Lily to Canton every day. And it, just trust the users. Trust that people are there every day. The traffic is already a problem, and there's more coming. We accept more coming. We just want it within reason. These developers have given you a plan, and we support it 110%. My ask of you tonight is that you support it, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speaker?
Jim Breen, 55 Church Street.
Good evening. I'm Jim Breen. I live with my wife Ruth, who's here, 55 Church Street. We're also in West Main. And just briefly, first, this is the second meeting I've come to, where you all are deliberating on this, and I really appreciate the effort of your service and the staff. In my business, I get around a lot of things like this, and I'm very impressed with what you've done, and the intention, attention you all pay to the citizens. I just want to point out that, you know, we're asking that this exception be approved, or this condition be struck, and which is, in effect, recommending that this part of the master plan not be completed. We get that. And it's, one thing I'd just like you all to remember, I mean, the master plan was about getting downtown built, where Main Street had really nice mixed use. And it back and behind it, Canton Street had really nice multi-residential. And we had folks that believed in it and came here and invested in it, and it's all working. But the master plan wasn't about a street. The master plan was about the mixed-use developments, working on North Main, and folks coming in and investing their money for their homes in these townhouses and some condominiums. And we're here. We're living. We're doing exactly what the master plan intended. But, you know, every plan that's 20 years old, or 10 years old, or however it is, I mean, you know, every plan has got to have something in it that you look at and go, well, that looked like a good idea at the time, but it's not a good idea now. And taking Lily Garden Drive and turning into a thoroughfare is just a bad idea. And it's not that we're not doing our part, living downtown. We live on Church Street, and some of my neighbors are here on Church Street also. That's a thoroughfare. That was there when we moved here. And it's right in front of our house. And a lot of us live on Canton Street. That's a thoroughfare. So, it's not that we're asking to have a little cocoon here, but the mixed-use development that these folks have put together is going to be phenomenal. But it's big, and there's a lot going on. And it, right now, it's residential. It's a little house. And mixed-use could mean anything. I mean, it said mixed-use development. What's that mean? Well, there's an office building next door, and it could have been something smaller. It could have been something bigger. But it is what it is now, and nobody would want to change it, because it's going to be beautiful. It's going to be exactly what was intended in the master plan. And our townhouses are exactly what was hoped for in the master plan. But all of us have to get out on that little street. It's just a driveway. You cannot get out of any one of our townhouses, all 28 of them, that are on both sides of this street, unless you come out that street, no matter which way you're facing. Same thing goes for the new ones across the street. So, you know, I realize, you guys, you're the Planning Commission. You don't own the master plan. You're supposed to be following it unless you can make it, unless there's a real good reason not to. And so, whatever it takes, we respectfully request that you all really consider this and stand with us, with the county, with the city council, because we don't need a thoroughfare on this little alley. That's not going to enhance the master plan. It's not going to make the mixed-use development better. And nobody's worked harder than these guys to put together a phenomenal mixed-use plant, development on Main Street. And no residents have worked harder to cooperate and come forth with something that we've worked together on. So, we just hope we're not going to be punished by this one aspect that maybe was a good idea at the time, but is a really bad idea now. So, we hope you stand with us on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one's Matt Street, 1105 Taylor Oaks Drive.
Hi. My name is Matt Street. I am the project manager for 100 North Main's construction. And we do support the project next door. Do feel like I was getting ganged up on a bit there, but do want to clear up a couple of things. We really do want the Coming Street extension. Our building was designed for that extension. We had to set aside 5,000 square feet of property from our development for that extension. It's important for the circulation of our garage and our building to have that extension. So, we, we really, that's one of the reasons that we continued and did the project that we did, was because of the way it was going to sit with the extension of the road. I do want to clear up a couple of things. As our project is designed, there's access into our lower-level parking deck. It comes in from Lily Garden and Violet Garden Walk, or Violet, I can't even pronounce the different names. But that's only the lower level of the parking deck. It's about 60 spaces. So, we had commissioned a traffic study. That may be what they're using. I don't, that was very early on in our design, and it was when we had circulation throughout the whole project and had the road. So, maybe there's some confusion as to how many trips there are going to be, but there's only maybe 60 spaces down there. So, I can't imagine that 60 parking spaces that do not have access to the front door unless you go down to the bottom and come up an elevator, deliveries and things are going to be on, off of Main Street into our primary deck. So, most of the people coming into that space are going to be employees, people that are there. And unless they're leaving back and forth seven times a day, that's the only way you'd ever get 350 unique trips of people going back and forth on that road. It's impossible. So, maybe we could update that to help them feel better about what's going on, but that's, there's only that many parking spaces in there. And the whole project, our whole project, has less than 90 parking spaces. So, even if every single one of them was finding a way to go up and down and double park down there, it's still, you're not going to get 350 trips a day. We don't have a restaurant. We don't have one of these types of uses in our property. We may have a flower shop or something like that, but nothing that's going to generate that kind of traffic, especially generate that kind of traffic with, when you're going to have the residential traffic there. Also, I would like to point out that the Lily Garden Way that comes between and goes to Canton was designed by the developer to connect to the extension, because the extension was in place, and it was part of the design and the approval, from our understanding, with everything that was set out. That's the width of the road, the size of the road, the design of the road. Everything about that road was designed to connect to the Coming Street extension. It didn't happen then, and then the Coming Street extension. It was already there. It was already envisioned. All the townhomes, all of those townhomes were built with the full understanding and knowledge that this was going to be there in, from the very beginning. Everyone that bought a townhome there, if they had been aware of the master plan, looked at the development, all of those things were in place. They were all in place. It was just a question of what got built first. So, they built the townhomes first, and yes, there is an issue there. But it might be very beneficial for us to update some traffic information to help the residents feel a little more comfortable about what kind of traffic is actually going to be there when we do that. But we're fully But we're fully supporting the project, the development here. We've worked with the engineers and his, the professionals he's got on the job to try to make this work. We've got an access that we're going to have to work together on to make it work for both of us. But it's a wonderful development and I hope you approve it.
We appreciate your comment and we appreciate everybody's comments. You are very eloquent in your presentations. I think the issues are very clear to the board. Is there anyone in opposition? Seeing none, I am going to turn this over to the board. Well, before that, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. As with respect to the dumpster, in our original plan, that was the only place that we could put it because of the roundabout and the entrances. We just haven't had time to engineer it. And when we get to our final parking counts, I think we're going to be able to move that up, up the hill, probably kind of where the roundabout used to be, where the trees are in that little center aisle. We're looking to find, truthfully, for us, it's not good to be down there. I mean, restaurants taking stuff down. I, I have another development they have to, I see the Starbucks guys going back two or three times a day and it's not that far. So we're, we're intending to bring that, but it, it's going to end up taking parking spots. So we just have to make sure, we have to balance between number of square feet, parking spots. I think right now we're actually nine plus nine on our total just estimated. So we probably will end up in the end moving that up off that street. But we just have to at least leave that in condition just in case we can't. And, but again, for my tenants, I don't want them to have to run down there because that's the first question they're going to ask is how are we going to make that rundown every day?
If, if I can ask a, a question? That would be wonderful if you could, and especially if you go before council, if you could have some kind of decision on that because, you know, I've been down this drive several times and just this week with one of the other commissioners and I, it would be really wonderful if you could move that away from the back there. And the, the second, I can't remember my second question, but it'll come to me. I should have. Huh?
You can ask it later.
Okay. Oh, the, I know what I was going to ask you. Let me go to the resistograph. So if we had that tonight, it would have been really helpful for us in making our decision. So I, I would highly recommend that you have that done for city council because it, it, it does make a difference in their determination of what they want to do. So it would have been really helpful tonight, but since we don't have it, we're going to have to make a decision on that based upon what we think should be. But it would have been a lot more helpful if you could have done it tonight, but like I said, if you could, please.
The day, the day that we walked out of here, I called three or four arborists that we worked with in the past that, and I asked them, do you know anybody's got, that can do a resistograph? And everybody, you know, we're too busy, we're too busy.
I know.
I've got one last shot and I spoke with them this morning about doing that.
Okay.
I, you know, again, I, I think we aimed to replace that with the idea that 21 six-inch trees, but in addition, I think there's 56 three-inch trees. So we're, the total caliper that we had to replace, I think it was 185 and we got like 280 inches planted out throughout the property and we're, and, you know, we can commit to all that. I mean, I want as many trees up as possible and I've done another development in Alpharetta off Old Milton Parkway. It's the same thing, looks like the Garden of Eden. And, you know, the, the trees that we ended up having, if we had to keep those two trees for whatever reason, it literally, because of the root, because of the, the root zone that we have to maintain, it, it almost takes out the entire first building. It, it's that big. And, and I, and if the trees are 75 years old, estimated, the lifespan of them is not more than that for, for water oak, they're going to die. One of them already did and.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that. It's just that for the impact.
Yeah, no, I.
Like Eric was saying, it would be really helpful for them to be, be able to determine what that would be. So if you could have that ready, that'd be great. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
And further questions for the applicant? No further questions. I'm going to turn this over to the board for motion and all discussion. And I would like to ask Michael a question, just a follow-up of that last question or The, um, the applicant's recommended change on 16 is to plant 21 trees six-inch caliber. I did hear Eric mention that, um, the reason for doing a, a resistograph would be to determine the level of recompense. Has staff determined whether the 21 trees would be sufficient to recompense for, for the removal of 787 and 788?
Yes, yeah. So the city arborist has looked at the planting plan that the applicant provided and does acknowledge that that would be, that would be potential recompense for, including those trees if they were determined to be specimen trees. Of course, we won't know if they're specimen trees unless we know the condition of the trees. That would be required at, during the LDP process, land disturbance permit process. So we would need to determine, an assessment would be required. And if the city arborist is not in agreement with the applicant's assessment, there would be this provision to do the resistograph as part of that process to determine if they are specimen. If they're specimen, they would have to recompense for those tree. If they are not specimen, they would not have to recompense for those trees.
The, the question, I'm, I'm getting the point of the reason for the resistograph. If the 21 trees six-inch caliber would be sufficient to recompense them, that the applicant already agreed they want to do?
Yes, the plan, the, the city arborist has looked at the, at the plan that is proposed and offered with the six-inch and the three-inch caliber trees and it would recompense those, those trees.
If the applicant is willing to do that, then why go that extra step?
So the, the extra step, I just think that it's, it's information that, you know, would have hopefully been ready for the planning commission in, in order to make a decision on condition 16, whether they wanted to accept the applicant's change or not and city council. So it's just information in order for them to make the best decision. Again, we don't have that information, so we, we do think that the, the applicant is making a reasonable offer here, but we don't have that information without that resistograph. So it is our recommendation that the applicant, as, as Commissioner Reynolds had mentioned, that the applicant do that resistograph prior to city council so that they have that information.
Basically, it's reinforced that he needs to plant 21 trees six-inch caliber.
Yes, but that would, it, that would.
That's what I'm getting.
It would exceed. What they're proposing is in excess of what would be required for the recompense.
I understood. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Michael, I have another quick, are you done? Sorry.
Yes.
I have a quick question on condition number nine, and I'm sure this is handled in part of the process, but I just want to double check. So on the diagrams that we saw today, one of the things that, you know, shot out at me before we got to the landscape plan was the hill, the grade. And when I drove it today, I honestly didn't recognize it the first time I drove it, but so are we going to be 100% sure there's some serious landscaping screening at the end of that road where they're making the turn? Because I think for the residents, I'm surprised that hasn't come up, but it shows it on the pretty picture, but is there a way to make sure?
Yeah, so condition nine, that was the purpose that we had that in. It's very similar to a condition that we had in on 100 North Main Street. So because this site drops and, let's see if we can get that.
It just says the parking deck. I just want to make sure that includes the drive into the parking deck. So that was all. Sure, someone can cover that at a different process.
It would apply to that, that area as well. So I think that what you were seeing, I don't have the same elevation that was in the applicant's presentation, but this drive kind of down into here. So the idea for condition nine, that it, this is going to screen, so this parking deck is going to be, it basically comes out of the earth at this location, you can see that. So the screening would be for this parking deck and these areas.
And the drive into the.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
Because I know that when we had the presentation last time, the neighbor was concerned about the wall being softened and I, we talked about the setbacks and the plantings there. So those two things, I just, at the process of whatever DRB process is that cover that.
Yes, yeah. The applicant's presented this landscape plan and, and they do show quite a bit of heavy landscaping in this area and this would be the plan that staff would follow during LDP.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have a discussion point. So I, I wanted to start because I think I tagged on to a comment last month that I thought the proposal was kind of half-baked at last month's meeting and I think it's more fully baked today. And specifically the building height and the stories, I appreciate the work on that. The landscape plan and, I don't know the exact number going from 185 required inches of trees to 280, I think that's good. And then the collaboration on the stream buffer topic with the city staff. But I wanted to say, I mean, I, I did have a, on the topic of trees, because trees is a very important topic and it's a very emotional topic. And when you decide to remove trees of that size, it's, it's a big deal, not just for the people in this room, but for the people who attend the council meeting and, and in the broader community. So I, I did have a 40-minute onsite visit on Tuesday with Commissioner Reynolds and there's a couple of data points from that visit that I wanted to share that have not come out. And I think they're very relevant to the trees and we'll explain where I land on the trees. First off, I want to echo what Commissioner Reynolds said, that I wish we had the resistograph results tonight because it is a very important topic. Old trees provide a lot of character for the community. That resistograph very well may come back and say that those trees are unhealthy, which kind of makes the trees a moot point. But absent that, I'm going to kind of share my two cents. And, and so really, no matter what we recommend tonight, as Commissioner Reynolds said, I urge the applicant to get the results of that resistograph test before the council final decision in a few weeks. But for me, where I stand, even if these trees, to be honest, are declared healthy by the resistograph test, I believe they pose a potential public safety risk and I want to share why I believe that. We had a little bit of talk about the age of these trees. The typical life for the willow oaks and the, and the water oaks are 65 to 80 years. There's a lot of research on that. But when I was onsite with Commissioner Reynolds, we spoke to the dentist from 134 North Main, I believe he's in the back of the room right now. And he shared some information that there was a third tree. So if you know where these two trees are located, 25 feet toward North Main in a direct line with the two trees we're talking about, there was a third tree that was the same type of tree, the same age, and even the, the resident in 126 North Main told us that they were planted at the same time based on her knowledge of previous residents. And so 16 years ago, this third tree out of the series of three in 2006 fell and destroyed, that's, I've got pictures from the dentist that he came out and showed us, destroyed a good portion of his building at 134 North Main. And so at that time, they counted the rings on the fallen tree that was the third out of these sister of trees. 16 years ago, the dentist tells me, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name, but he tells me that they counted the rings on the tree 16 years ago and there were 85 rings. Those trees 16 years ago, I believe, were 85 years old, which would put them at 101 today and with an average life of 65 to 80 years. So the age, I believe they're more like 101 and I believe they've lived a good life and I have no problem supporting their removal. The other points are just the comments, the additional comments from the owners of 126 and 134 North Main. The woman at 126 North Main told us that tree, that limbs routinely fall from those trees six to eight times a year. And she went on to say, some are big enough to dent cars. So these are not like little twigs. They're, they're, and whether it's healthy or not, I, I don't have that information today, but I'm going off of what the public has told us. She said that she's scared every night there's a storm, that these trees will fall. And that both owners, and, and we didn't even ask them any questions, Commissioner Reynolds and I, they just offered this up. They, they both believe, even though they've lived there a long, long time and they appreciate trees, they believe those trees should be removed and that they're a safety hazard. The other thing, just real quick, the proximity of these trees to the proposed development at 126 North Main and the dentist office at 134 North Main, they're right on the property line essentially. They're like a foot from the property line. My estimate, I didn't walk it off, but I, I bet you that dentist is filling cavities probably 25 feet from those trees. And all of his parking is directly below those trees. And the applicant's parking, a large portion of it is right in the area of those trees. So proximity is another thing. And then the last thing is, both the applicant's arborist and the city's arborist both agree that these trees have basidiocarp, which, you know, a resistograph or not yet, is a good indicator of tree and root rot in both trees. So based on that, I'm, I'm very supportive of removing condition 16 and I just wanted to explain that for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions?
Mr. Commissioner, I have one, I have one final question about the, the extension. Is that a DOT or is that the city of Alpharetta's plan?
The extension? It would be a local road, city of Alpharetta.
I had a general question too. So I felt like the citizen comments have been very helpful on this and to read through all their emails and one of the gentleman mentioned it felt like a war zone with construction. Just for, what can they do, citizens do, in the midst of all this construction and things downtown if they have a problem with their roads being blocked and things like that? What's the process for that?
So they can always reach out to us and, and they have, you know, when this, there's been a recent situation where a truck parked on their driveways actually and, and broke the driveways in west of Main as well as the sidewalks. So that was done, that park was truck, parked there without a right-of-way permit to, to do that within the right-of-way of Violet Garden Walk. But always can contact Community Development if there's anything going on there. The contractor, we discussed, Eric actually went out to the site and, and had a conversation with the contractor and put them on notice that they needed to work with the private property owners to resolve the, the matters. And I, hopefully, I think we've gotten through to the, to the contractor at that site, that they need to be good neighbors and, and, and remember that they're working in a pretty tight environment there. But they can always contact us if they see activity that they don't believe is, is proper.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion or end motion?
Well, I, I, I kind of do want to discuss 22. I, I do feel like that I'm in agreement that possibly 22 should be removed. But if we do that, then we're also saying that we're actually not going according to our master plan. So I'm feeling a little.
I think one is clarifies it, that what the applicant added was in red or site modifications due to the future extension of Coming Street.
So you think that we would be okay to, to agree to the removal?
Yeah, because they are conditioning one on, they, they have an "or", except for modification required to comply with the modifications below, which are the conditions, or sign modifications due to the future extension of Coming Street. So that basically takes care of 22 and, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, but isn't that just saying that if we remove that and they have to modify, the only way to modify it, I, I don't know if the developer, if he's still here, the only way to modify it would be for him, for them to access from Lily Valley. So now we're saying, we're opening that whole discussion about putting traffic back through there again.
And then the, the, sorry, the site plan does not recruit the future connection, but I will let Michael explain it a little better than I would.
So the site plan doesn't necessarily. So, the site plan doesn't necessarily preclude the extension of Coming Street, however, the problem with it, with not striking condition number 22 at this time, is that condition one ties it to this site plan that is up on the overhead right now. This site plan shows access to the lower portion of the parking deck from this driveway off of North Main Street. The applicant has stated that if the Coming Street extension occurs, this is no longer as possible at this location, and that they would need to move access to the lower portion of the deck to Violet Garden Walk. However, the applicant couldn't do that without first going back to city council to modify condition number one, because it ties it to this site plan. So, it's, you know, ultimately, it is up to Planning Commission with respect to the conditions that you recommend and send forward to city council, but I do believe that there is a conflict between condition one and condition two, how they are currently written. So, the applicant is asking, therefore, for condition 22 to be removed.
Does that clarify it?
Yeah.
So, really, if we wanted to totally eliminate the option of connecting, I mean, the goal is not to put this parking deck access off Lily Way. Wouldn't we want to strike that out of one, potentially?
Would you, I'm sorry, would, strike what out of?
I get that it's in the master plan, but as a citizen, listening to the citizens in this room, putting the extension does not make sense with what's been built.
Understood.
And so, for me, I actually would like to have the red onsite modifications due to the future extension of Coming Street stricken from statement one, so that we don't risk having this exit dump onto that residential street.
That is certainly an option that is before the Planning Commission this evening. You could certainly just not accept the applicant's language here. I think what they were trying to do here was clarify that the site plan, that tie it to the site plan, but allow for site modifications due to the future extension of Coming Street, but that wasn't considering that they were going to then.
The site modification is dumping this onto the residential street, and that's not something.
I agree with you, I don't know that this is necessary, the red, the language in red here in condition number one is suggested, just the date change is probably necessary if you're going to go ahead and accept the applicant's request to strike 22.
Am I the only one that's?
No, I agree with you. I don't feel comfortable leaving that, that's why I brought it up, I wanted to discuss it, because I really do feel like it should not be a possibility.
And the last question I have for you, Michael, so this master plan was done in 2015, when is the anticipated review of that?
The review of the downtown, so we typically will, we'll update a master plan about every 10 years.
Okay.
So, there's probably another three years, and before we would do a major update to the downtown master plan.
Just didn't know, thank you.
Yep.
Or city council could modify it at any time they wish, correct?
Certainly, city council could instruct staff to bring forward changes to the downtown master plan to remove road connections, that's certainly an option. They could also approve the applicant's request before them, and they could either, you know, strike conditions that wouldn't even require or allow for that connection to happen.
Okay, thank you.
So, are you suggesting resetting 22 and deleting the red on the one, except the date?
Yeah, I would not be in favor of this proposal as presented with an exit onto the residential streets. So, I don't personally feel comfortable putting that option forward, allowing that to happen. So, I would say strike or site modifications due to future extension of Coming Street, but maybe the developer could give me a head nod that, is there?
That's fine.
Sure. I mean, can we at least make sure he, is that incorrect for me to say that?
Yes.
Sorry.
Were you also in favor of keeping, striking 22?
And striking.
And striking the applicant's markup on number one, and also striking number 22?
Removing number 22 and only keeping the date on number one, because we need to show the date plan, because this plan is significantly different, but striking the words "or" site modification due to future extension of Coming Street. But I would, respectfully, Chairman, I just would love to get the applicant's.
You can ask him any question, you just need to answer it on record, so it can be recorded.
Thank you.
Brent Beecham again. I don't have a problem with that, the only reason we wrote that was if the city built that road irrespective of 22, they decided to build that road, then we would have no choice, and it would, it would cut out our entrance. But I'm okay with you striking it and taking out 22, because if you take out 22, then we don't have, we don't have to worry about the extension unless somebody else changes it somewhere in the future. I mean, we're gonna, we'll be able to work with it, it's fine. I'm okay with striking it.
Thank you, appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
So, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, do you have a question? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-22-02 slash V-22-08, 116, 126 North Main Street, so the condition presented, however, on condition number one, leave the date for 28-22, but strike or site modification due to the future extension of Coming Street. Condition number 11, update the date. Condition number 17, I would like to leave the red as presented, striking the black text. And on condition number 22, I'd like to approve that.
Just point of clarification, was that condition?
That's 16.
With the tree? Okay, just want to make sure.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly settled. Any further discussions? No further discussions, or in favor, please reach your right hand. Motion careless, unanimously. To be had by council on the 23rd, so come back, prepare to defend it, recommendation is for approval. Thank you for joining us tonight, and have a great night. Meeting is adjourned.